I'd like to call the village board meeting to order. It's March 10th, 2014. This is meeting number 3,070. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Evernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Very good. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. Spring is upon us.
Well.
We made it. A great day today, so with that, we will move on. Approval of minutes. I need a motion for the approval of minutes for February 24th.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Kim. Second by Voss. Discussion.
Meyer.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Evernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Present.
Sullivan?
Very good. Motion carries. At this point in the evening, we can have public commentary. Does anyone here tonight wish to address the board? Oh, very good. Come on up. Just give us your name to the clerk and go ahead.
My name is Dakota Norton. D-A-K-O-T-A-H. And my address is 132 Racine Place. I'd like to address the board today about the location of the farmer's market here in Mundaline. I've heard that it will be being moved this year, and I would just like to sort of get some more information. I've reached out to Joanne Bednar, who is the market manager, and she has provided very little information. I don't think she knows too much about the topic yet herself, but I am excited to have it moved because I know last year's spot was not a great environment. It was a wind tunnel. There were multiple vendors who lost their tents. It was hot, and there was no visibility, which I think is the primary issue with that spot, is that you can't see it from any major roads in Mundaline. So I'm a vendor. My family owns Holcomb Hollow. I recognize a few of you as our patrons here, and I'd like to maybe just make some suggestions as to where in town I think would be just great spots for it, based on conversations I've had with other markets at the Mundaline Market and as well as at the other markets we operate at. Cracklauer Park, I feel, is a pretty, is an excellent option. It's right there on 45. People could see it. We could put a big banner up right on the fence along 45. It's near the Park District Building, which would offer excellent storage opportunities just for a lot of the ongoing, I mean, I know there's a lot of tables and the tents that are used just by the management. There's also the Santa Maria del Popolo parking lot just across the street from Cracklauer Park. That would just have excellent visibility. I believe that's where, just north of where the Boy Scouts do their rummage sale every year. And then also, the Walgreens parking lot, which is all but abandoned. It's just a huge space that if we were operating in the southeast corner of that parking lot, there would still be parking along the strip mall for those businesses there, as well as for farmer's market businesses, and I think that that would be even a bigger space than we were using in the year past. So I would just, I'd like to get any feedback from the board as to where you think it will be heading and just what sort of options we're facing.
Mike, would you want to weigh in on that?
The farmer's market committee's talked about this, and you're correct, there isn't, there hasn't been a site chosen, although we've presented one for the board's consideration. We did look at all of those locations, well, not the Walgreens parking lot, because that's private property, and it would be difficult, we felt, to get the owner's permission to take up parking for the customers such as they are at that lot. But we did look at the Cracklauer Park location and the Santa Maria lot, both on 45 and on Seymour. The problem with the lot on 45 is there's no electricity, and as you probably know, there's about five or six vendors that require electricity, and they require electricity for some of the entertainment. There's also, more than likely, we felt there might be rent that we'd have to pay at that lot as well. And the Cracklauer Park lot is too small. There is electricity there. That's the good side, the good thing. It is visible, although, you know, somewhat set back from 45, but the lot itself is not as big and not as easily set up for the vendors, because it's one way in and one way out of that lot. And the field that we use for Mundaline Days, a lot of people think is Cracklauer Park, it's actually the church property. So where we settled was in front of the new village hall for the, in the plaza, or around the plaza. It's pretty visible from Holly Street. There's, there's going to be businesses, the village, you know, will be in business right in the village hall, along with Weston. It's right by the Metro Parking Lot, so it's very visible from, and easily accessible by Metro Parking Lot users. And then there's businesses in the Sigma Building to the south, so that's what we put forward for the board to consider.
So is that affirmed? There's not a firm consensus on that yet, though?
I don't know. It's really just talked to John about it and wrote it up for John recently. Maybe that hasn't even passed it on to the board?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was just, we just had talked about that. So we, the committee, the market committee thinks that'll be a, there's enough room. We looked at the site for the availability of setting up the vendors, access to electricity, visibility, and where the, the other problem with a lot of locations is where do the visitors park? So we thought that spot offered good visitor parking, good vendor, easy for the vendors to get in and out, and reasonable visibility with good electrical opportunities.
Okay. Thank you. The only other spot that I do have written down I wanted to mention is, I know in the Libertyville Farmer's Market, they close down a street every Thursday morning and have their market there, and that creates a lot of visibility. And so I was thinking we could do, keep the location closed down, Park Street, between 45 and Seymour, and then we would still have that same parking that we've used in the past years, as well as it would keep that familiarity, where people know they can keep going to generally the same spot, as well as it would just increase the visibility from 45, which I think would be a huge factor.
They did look at the, we did look at that. There's a couple of problems with that plan. One, one was closing the streets, and it's, it would be a weekly thing. It would be pretty impactful to businesses. But also, the lot not being available, isn't available for parking either for guests, so it, it may look like a lot of space, but when you take that out of the mix, it was felt that that'd probably be the second option, but they thought that going to Village Hall would be the best first option.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Gallus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Larry Gallus, 2241 Creekwood Drive, Mundaline. As most of you know, I've just attended the six o'clock meeting, and I have to have taken some notes. First of all, I want to thank BDI for doing the work that they've done. It was a lot of work. They did a lot of focus groups, and I want to commend the board for authorizing the branding initiative in the first place. Full first step, and I know there's still a lot of work to go. From a personal standpoint, and from what the EDC has been doing with regards to the focus groups that we have attended, we've done also a lot of work on that, and for what it's worth, we've been drawn to the Mundaline star, the logo, star with the Mundaline name on it. We think it's visually attractive. It symbolizes Mundaline as a rising star in Lake County. I think it's extremely powerful, and in time, it can be very, very adaptable and usable for any of the needs that we have. However, having said that, I also want you to know that the board will stand, the EDC will stand 100% behind whatever initiative you do, because we're the EDC, we're going to go out and we're going to try and sell this. And I think we can definitely sell the star, but we'll sell whatever you guys are going to give us. So we're 100% behind you, and we want to thank you for your time for putting that together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question?
Mike, can I just, so I make sure I understand, by the star, you mean the top star, not the bottom star?
Right. The bottom star is the bean.
Oh. Okay.
Bean is for growing, star is for powerful, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the floor then and move on to presentation and awards. We have a potential development at 407 East Holly Street. This is exhibit two. So someone here to, Victor, you want to introduce them, or?
No.
Okay. Go ahead and give us your name and.
You know, it occurs to me, we're like a 20-minute presentation, and you'll probably have questions and answers. Did you want to do your ceremony first?
You know, I thought of that. It's in the order that I, as you were coming up, I thought, boy, maybe we should have arranged it. Would you mind?
Yeah, they have family here. No, that'd be great.
Let's do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Chief Sashco, would you like to talk about a promotion?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board and staff. Earlier this evening, the Board of Fire and Police Commission conducted a special meeting to promote our new lieutenant, Brian Jones. We wanted to introduce him to the board tonight. Brian started with our department in 1996 as a paid-on-call member and was certified as a paramedic in 1998. He was hired full-time with the department in 2000. He's got a bachelor's degree from Southern Illinois University, so we love that for the future of the organization. He's joining here tonight with his wife Stephanie and his son AJ, and Tara, who are in the back of the room. Mom and dad were here earlier. So we just want to congratulate Brian, and then the person that filled in his position is firefighter, paramedic, Justin Kennedy, who was also sworn in tonight. So we have completed all of our process with the changes that we've made, so I'd like to welcome Brian to our staff officer position here and introduce him to the board. Congratulations.
All right. Very good. All right. Folks, you want to come on up about the 407 East Holly Street?
That was nice, but I have to say, I was a little disappointed when we walked in. I thought the cake was for us. Good evening. I'm Larry Pussitary. I'm one of the principals of Vera Green Development. And?
I'm Chris Pope. I'm the organizer with Lake County United.
And we wanted to talk to you about a development that we've been working on in the community and get your reactions and thoughts about it. Chris is going to talk a little bit about the origins, about how it came to be, and then I'll spend a little more detail, and then we're going to bring up our architects who'll show you the design that we're looking at.
So I don't know how many of you know, Lake County United is a community organization that's about 10 years old. We're a coalition of 32-member organizations that are mainly congregations across Lake County and some nonprofit organizations. So housing has always been an issue that people have been concerned with and kind of rallied around. One of these slides talks about kind of historically what Lake County United has done related to housing and working to get more affordable housing in the budget for the county. And then most recently, we worked with Mercy Housing to build a 70-unit senior building in Grace Lake on 120 for seniors and people with disabilities. So our folks said this is great, but we also wanted to try to develop some housing for people that are not seniors and our families as well. So our team started looking around at what properties might be available in different municipalities and speaking to municipalities, and wound up meeting with Mr. Barrera and your Department of Planning, who helped us look at your development plan and identify a potential site over on Holly Street. We were talking with Larry and his company, somebody who could do the development, and brought him in to look and see, you know, if this location might meet our goals. We then, we, part of the application to the state housing department requires a nonprofit partner in the deal, so then we spoke to Mary Ellen Tomasi at the Lake County Residential Development Corporation, who agreed to come in and be the nonprofit partner. Had a couple of conversations with David Northern at the Housing Authority to get their support. Vera Green was able to get site control, working with the owner of the property. We submitted a pre-application, and so now we're here to share our ideas and our plans with you to get your feedback on this development, which we think would be a great addition and complement to the development that you're doing downtown. And we really appreciated Mr. Barrera sort of steering us in that direction, because we think it's a really great location, both for families and for folks with disabilities because of transportation and access to all of the amenities in the area.
All right. So Vera Green Development, so we're the developers on the project. We're a recently founded company, but it's made of principals who've been developers for quite a while between us. We have 50 years. I started in the development of affordable housing in the late 80s. We've had a number of successes in the affordable housing arena in terms of securing financing for projects, as you can see from the chart, and we are excited to be selected by the local community members, Lake County United, and so as the potential developers for this project. And, oh, that's backwards. There we go. And we'll spend a little more time introducing our various partners that Chris mentioned briefly. So in partnership with us, as co-developer, is the Lake County Residential Development Corporation. Lake County Residential Development Corporation has been in the county for over 35 years developing affordable housing. They have a variety of properties. They've been in Mundaline since the late 80s, as well as a number of other surrounding communities. And you see, they have over 1,000 apartments that they've developed in partnership with four property developers like ourselves at other sites in the county. And one of the founding organizations of the whole conception of the project and the continuing partner in the development of the project is the Lake County Center for Independent Living, which is obviously locally based, but is serving the whole county. They are going to be, that's a little difficult to read, they're going to be our referral source for the disability units. They're also going to be our service source for those units as well, and they are actually about less than a block and a half away from the site, so very conveniently located to what we're trying to do here. You pretty much said this right. So that's Lake County United, Chris's organization. They were really the progenitors of the whole conception of, you know, trying to address the need for affordable housing in Lake County. They, like Chris mentioned, they've already developed a property in Grace Lake, was very successful for the elderly. They identified additional need and brought the various partners together to develop this project. That's some of their member organizations, in a sense, that the Lake County is comprised of.
So the Lake County Center for Independent Living is one of its members.
And the architects for the project are Hooker DeYoung, and I'm going to allow them to spend more time introducing themselves when we get to the plans very shortly. And then Evergreen, just one second. And then for property management, Vera Green has a sister company called Evergreen Real Estate Services, and that has been around for 15 years, managing properties, both affordable and market rate. We have a number of properties in Lake County, but it's, we also have a lot throughout the greater Chicago area and some in some other states as well, experienced with the specifics of the financing compliance and what we're going to begin with. I'm going to talk about the financing later, and have a very respected and successful track record in terms of maintaining the properties. Sorry, I'm not, obviously not very good at this. Joseph Duffy is the construction company we're going to be working with. Our company's worked with them before on projects, and we found them to be very capable, competent, concerned, and honest contractors who've managed to develop, managed to build projects substantially larger, but also smaller, and including the size of this project. So we're very happy to have them on board and working with us. They're very detailed-oriented, and have worked with a whole variety of communities in Chicago areas, and I think your development department here at the city will find it very pleasant to work with. Okay. So the site we're talking about is 407 East Holly. We were looking at a variety of sites, not just in Mundaline, but throughout the larger community, but we felt that this would be a very attractive site for our purposes. And the reason is, is access to the downtown amenities, as Chris mentioned. It's close to public transportation, which is, you know, essential for people with affordable restricted incomes who will then need public transportation to get to their employment and other things. It's accessibility to the Center for Independent Living. You couldn't get any closer without being in their offices. Close to a variety of amenities, as we mentioned, grocery, schools, pharmacies, close to a local park, and next door to the post office. We think this project also integrates very well with your redevelopment plan. One of the things that's called for specifically is development of apartment housing within the downtown area, to increase density, to increase consumers for your potential retail. And we think that this project really fits quite well with what you're hoping to do, and we are glad to be a good neighbor of yours in terms of achieving the goals of the community. And now we're into the plans, so I'll call up Eric if he could, he'll talk about specifically what we're looking to build, and then we'll have time for your questions afterwards.
I'm Eric Marring from Hooker DeYoung Architects. As Larry said, we'll be the architects for the project. We're based out of Skegan, Michigan. We've got offices in Chicago, Detroit, near Grand Rapids, and one of our specialties is, is projects like this, affordable housing. We've done multiple projects in Michigan, and we're licensed in 14 states and a few projects all over. So I'll give you a brief overview of what we've been planning for the site. We've worked pretty closely with Victor and Colleen to make sure that what we're proposing kind of fits within the zoning ordinance and fits within the vision for what you guys see for the downtown. You got that?
Yeah. Can I add something? Oh, okay.
Probably most of you know, the site is currently developed, and I tried to show on here the, kind of the outline of the existing building, which is this area here. So what we're proposing to do is keep the building that's on site and kind of build around it and above it. The building we're proposing is a three-story building, pushing it up, close off to Holly and Anthony. The zoning ordinance has a build-to zone of 10 to 15 feet, so we're pushing that building, kind of addressing the street right up to the property line, you know, moving the parking to the back of the site, so it's not visible off of Holly. Get an idea of, the three-story portion kind of is an L-shaped in this area. Entry off of Anthony. We're kind of showing, you know, talking to Victor, you know, your plans for Anthony, so we're kind of showing how our site will still work once you guys move forward with that reconfiguration. Give you a quick sense of the floor plan. It's oriented, this is, Holly is right here. So our first floor, you can see that footprint, we're reusing that building. We're putting some of our common program in there, offices, laundry facility, storage, and then kind of wrapping it around with the proposed units. And then the second story kind of is, like I said, was built kind of through the existing building and then to the east and west with our common elevator core, stair tower, some common space in here. We've got the elevation. You can kind of see at the bottom of our, with our presentation, what we're thinking for the exterior of the building. We're looking at a combination of brick and possibly like a hardy siding with a pitched roof, really looking at varying the facade, you know, creating really appealing architecture, and then, you know, talking to Victor and Colleen. They really, we really want to focus on creating a nice entrance off of Holly, Holly Street, so there's kind of a front door to the building. So we have two entrances off, one off of Holly and then one off the parking, the parking lot in the rear. As part of the tax credit application, we are looking to get Enterprise Green Community certified. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. It's kind of like the LEED certification, which I'm sure most of you have heard of. It's very similar. It's a point-based system. It's got, it's got mandatory items, and it's got kind of points as well. Some of the points that we're looking for, it's, you know, we get points for being close to transportation, using water, conserving plumbing fixtures. Part of that also is the construction, where we're targeting a certain level of construction waste being recycled, providing for recycling, storage inside the building. The roofing will be Energy Star labeled roofing, reducing the heat island effect, Energy Star kitchen appliances, light fixtures, and we're also looking for, to create a smoke-free building as well. Accessibility features, where, you know, we talked about creating enhanced accessibility. We will provide for the minimum amount of fully accessible units, but on top of that, all of the units will have many accessible features, accessible appliances, accessible countertops, accessible paths throughout the facility, you know, zero barrier entries. And then like, like I said, some of the units will be designed to be fully accessible building code standards.
Thank you, Eric. So this is our budget for the development. On the left-hand side is the costs, and on the right-hand side is the financing. As you can see, of the 13 and a half million dollars, eight and a half million dollars are coming from low-income housing tax credits. That's the driver of about 90% of development in the country right now, and it is what we are applying to the state for, for financing, and if we are successful, then that would be the lion's share of what we need to raise for development. Otherwise, the costs are pretty standard, acquisition and construction, and some contingency for the construction, so we don't, we can handle any surprises, and soft costs, which is a variety of fees to various lenders, and the reserves, which are sort of securing the future of the project to make sure that there's enough money to handle any things that come up, like capital cost items, such as, you know, roofs and boilers and such that break down over time. And then the other sources for financing besides the tax credits, we're asking the state for several million dollars in loans. We'll have an energy grant from the state, and we have the developer's participation as well. So the things that we're kind of looking for from the village are, we need to confirm that we are in fact zoning compliant with our design, and we've been working with your department to make sure that we are, we are in fact meeting all the requirements. We need the city to, the village to confirm that we are, in fact, our plans are meeting the comprehensive plan goals. We're looking for a support letter from the mayor, and then we want to spend some time talking with. And then we want to spend some time talking about potential to financing to help the development with your staff in more detail in the future. And that's our presentation. We're glad to take your questions.
Trustee Meyer.
Yeah, were you planning on demolishing the existing building or reusing it?
We're actually going to integrate it into our design, so we're going to keep it and build up in it and around it as well.
Okay.
Or we're going to take the safes out.
Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it a safety concern at all to have the families with children so close to a train track?
Yeah, so we're going to be having a, like a tree buried there. I don't know if you remember the design, but I'm going to go back to the site plan. And we'll also have a play area on the site for them as well, so they will stay away from the train. You see on the train side, which is, you know, going diagonal on the left there, we're going to try and keep as much of a natural barrier as possible over there.
Question about the tax, property taxes and this thing. Is it, would it pay full property taxes on? I mean, this, this, are you tax exempt as far as?
No, we're not, we're not tax exempt. We would pay property taxes on the property.
So there'd be no negative impact to the taxes we're going to have this in there, right? Well, that's fantastic. And the other question here, illustration shows all kinds of trees around there. Is that just to make your drawing look nice, or you really want to put all those trees up so the project looks nice?
We want to do it both because it'll make the project look nice for the safety barrier that the other trustee mentioned, and as a sound impediment to the train as well, so it'd be more attractive. We'll also have sound mitigation windows and build on the side that is facing the railroad so that there won't be an impact from the noise as well.
I think it's really nicely coming out.
Oh, thank you.
I have a question. I agree, I think this looks really nice. Will there be any kind of staff living on site? Or being, I saw you had offices. Will it be staff during the day?
No, I mean, the staff will be there during the day, not living on site though. So this is really an apartment building, except it's restricted to people's incomes so that people, you know, have to be at 60% of the area, meaning income or below. That's about, I think it's, I'm looking it up real quick, it's reminding my memory. But that's, you know, kind of a working-class income for a family of five, say, in three bedrooms. That would be a worth of $50,000, $40,000. So that's what makes it different. The other thing that makes it different from any other apartment building is that we're also going to target some of the units, not a majority of them, for people who have disabilities. And those will be referrals from.
That was my question, because you have people with disabilities, sometimes they need additional help.
Yeah, well, there'll be members of SIL, and those, you know, because of that, they'll have services, service establishment already with being part of that organization, they already have their services addressed.
Right.
And then SIL will be part of the committee that's evaluating tenants who are appropriate for that independent living environment. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're not setting up people to fail.
Right.
So we'll be pre-selecting people who would be able to live without having a caretaker on a permanent basis.
Okay, so that was part of my question. Do you have, you know, how many set aside for people with, persons with disabilities and families with children and how many?
Yeah, so we'll have 12 for people with disabilities, and that could be families or singles. We expect there'll probably be more singles just from the membership of SIL right now. And then the rest is for families who like, you know, have income restrictions, income limitations, but otherwise they're standard family. It'd be 10, I'm sorry, it'll be 20 three-bedrooms and 11, I think I remember right, nine ones, I have to go back to the chart, nine ones.
That's okay.
Yeah, round 10 and 10.
They will be paying some form of rent though.
Oh yeah, everybody will pay rent in the building. There's a standard rent they'll be paying. And we'll, you know, we're, because of the financing, we as owners are financially responsible for this property for at least 15 years. And we're going to be evaluating people to make sure that it's appropriate for them, that they can afford the rents. It's not going to be free housing. And that, that way, they'll be good neighbors to their other tenants, and they'll promote the success of the building. We don't want to bring in people who really can't afford the rents, and that just makes them have another failure experience and makes them a bad neighbor to the other tenants. And really, you know, we don't want to risk the other 39 because we put in somebody who is inappropriate. And our property management company has handled thousands of units of affordable housing. We're very experienced with this and prepared for handling whatever comes up in the normal course of operating the property.
Thank you. I also want to echo that I think it's a very attractive building, so I really applaud you. I think you've done a great job of incorporating the desires of our comprehensive plan and zoning in it. You mentioned a play area though?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering where that's going to go.
I was wondering that too when I said that, because I don't see it on the design.
Thank you.
We kind of have it shown, right now, like the way that the site is, I mean, parking back here, building here, we kind of have a green space up here off of Holly. So right now, we kind of have that shown up at Montier.
So when you say play area, are you just talking about, you're just going to have grass, or are you talking about equipment?
We're talking about having equipment, having playgrounds. Is it going to be fenced in? I think we could look at that. I mean, I think in proximity to the train tracks, I think we'd at least want to look at partially fenced in.
Yeah, probably, you know, like an attractive iron fence that, you know, is really more of a, almost like a psychological barrier, you're not going to go behind it beyond it. You'd have to climb it, the kids would be able to climb it, but they'd really have to go out of their way to really get out over there. That's a good suggestion, thanks.
Okay, well, I, I think it's a great idea.
Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do too. I think it's a very attractive building. And of course, it seems to fit with the architectural theme the village would like to greet in this downtown square area.
Victor was very good about keeping our feet to the fire on that.
We hope you would find it appropriate and unaffordable to use more hard-surface masonry than, you know, your, but a question I have, how many units, living units would be in this?
There'll be 40.
40. And what's the expected population of residents in the?
So it'd be 20 three-bedrooms. Sorry, I don't want me to count here. It's around 10 and 10, but there's a slight percent.
I apologize, you probably have it in the information book.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you asking about the makeup of the apartments, or what they expect the total population to be?
Total population, you have 40 units and half of them are fractionally.
Nine ones and 11 twos, 23s. So we're seeing it as a mix of both families and singles.
And all these units, you would expect will be rent subsidized?
No, I mean, they're capital subsidized, meaning they're going to be lower than market rents because we're getting this cheap financing, the tax credits and the loans. And then some of them may be rent subsidized, but we've applied for some rent subsidy for up to a third of them, but we won't know about that for a couple of months.
Okay, and the agency subsidizing, would you be the county housing authority?
Yeah, they run it through a different organization called the Regional Housing Initiative, which is run by the Metropolitan Planning Commission, which is a multi-county organization that is working with the various housing authorities sort of integrate their programs. But the contract will eventually go to the housing authority if we get one for those third of the units, so.
The funding for that is federal as well?
Yeah, that will be federal, yeah.
And of course, when you look at the southeast corner of the village, needs to acquire property or at least a leasement across, the property is not a dedication. The organization has applied that?
Yeah, we're glad to participate and basically donate that land to the village because, you know, we think that's important at the Holly, that Anthony be adjusted in that way, and it's not land that's essential for our development, so we're glad to participate with you in that way.
Well, it certainly would provide a much more attractive gateway into.
You think so too.
This adult area than, and, or a good thought, or a good project and.
Thank you.
Come to fruition.
Anyone else? I have a question about the management. I too, I love the look of it and everything. On the management, 40 units, and there's no overnight property manager there. And I only kind of question that because I know that there's complexes in town that have far fewer units that do have overnight. And it's just as convenient to, in the middle of the night, to have someone present. Is this, you know, do you want to address that at all, or, you know, do you have offices there?
Yeah, I think we're going through our own experience where we, you know, we don't have typically a night manager. For example, we just, we're operating right now, it's properties in Island Lake and Grayslake that are larger. And we have a similar situation where we have, you know, management presence during the day. We also have a maintenance presence that can, you know, do a little bit of the off-hours, but we're not anticipating. We do do the latest in terms of security hardware so that we're, have camera access on a regular basis to all of the exterior and interior. We like to, just as, you know, we just think that's wise to do, not that we're having any expectations other than any other apartment building. But that also enables us to have additional coverage beyond actually having someone physically present overnight.
Okay. And so those cameras feed in remotely to?
That's right.
Okay.
We have a service that's watching, that's right.
Very good. Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions. If you got the green light to move forward this project, when do you expect to break ground?
Well, it's state and federal bureaucracy, so we hope to break ground around the turn of the year. So we wouldn't even hear about our success or the lack of success with the state until June. And then there's a whole flurry of paperwork that goes on basically till the end of the year, so January 1 would be our whole start for construction.
And then who would own the building when it's all done?
So that'll be us and Lake County Residential, the nonprofit partner we talked about, will own in conjunction with the investors, with the tax credit investors who are purchasing these tax credits, the eight and a half million dollars. But we're the managing members between the two of us. They're the limited partners, so they're really kind of have to by law, to protect the liability, kind of be the silent partner. But they are co-owners with us, we're just the ones who are running it and owning it with them.
And then lastly, you had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that you have this property, I don't know which words were, under control, or what does that mean?
Oh, we have a purchase option on the property, which if we're successful in securing our financing, we'll exercise that option and purchase it. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. And I didn't mean to be evasive about the investor-owner, they just haven't been identified yet there. So a lot of potential investors would be interested in something like this, but nobody gets serious until we've gotten the award of the tax credits from the state. And we'll certainly share the information as soon as we, as soon as we've identified a partner. And we've worked with a variety of them in the past and known them to be, you know, good partners with us.
Well, management is everything in an apartment complex. What's the name of the property manager?
Evergreen Real Estate Services. And we're glad to take you through any of our facilities if they think that'd be valuable. Like, as you saw on the slide, we have 100% compliance record. What that means is, you know, because of the government financing, there's, all of the various financing entities are doing regular inspections, they're checking our files, they're taking physical inspections of the property, they're reading our monthly management report because the investor has a huge stake in here, they have eight and a half million dollars, and because the government has seven million dollars alone. So this will be potentially the most watched property in the community just because of our financing sources. But even if we didn't have any of those third parties, like I said, we're signing financial, substantial financial guarantees as the owners. We're going to watch this very closely and not, you know, allow anything bad to happen to it because, you know, the consequences both to the community and to ourselves.
Evergreen Real Estate?
Services.
Services.
Yes. And there's a website if you want to go, but really, if anybody's interested, we're glad to take you through some of our other properties.
Anyone else?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. What are the next steps from our perspective? Is it planning commission?
I would think so.
Yeah, the next step is to actually make some additional refinements to the site plan, get the letter of support that the developer's looking for, to submit his application, start doing some, some further staff review, identifying the need for the, start identifying the actual land for needed for the extension of, and the connection of Anthony. We may look at evaluating the TIF assistance, evaluating those numbers. Certainly at some point, there will be a request to assign to negotiating team members. We'll start working on a redevelopment agreement. There may be a need to attend a Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, one for a need for a re-subdivision, and maybe a variance or two, but at this point, it's too early on to know that part of it. But certainly we'll need a trip to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a re-sub. So there's quite a few steps that we need to still take before this comes back to the board for formal consideration and approval.
Of course, we'll make ourselves available for anything in that process.
And are we going to later have a motion to authorize me to do this letter that they need from the board?
Yes, we will be working on that within, within the next week or two.
Okay, okay. Kick stuff. Thank you very much.
So we need, I didn't follow that real quick, sorry. So we need that by the end of the month, is that something we can still get accomplished?
Yes, we can get that accomplished, bring it to the board at their next meeting on March 24th.
Okay.
We've certainly had some discussions with our village attorney, Charlie Marino, about certain requests. We've received the draft for the letter that we will be reviewing. And again, we'll be working through all of that, and I expect to bring that back to the board on the 24th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate it, and we look forward to being one of your neighbors going forward.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. What we'll do is, we have no public hearings tonight. I'll do my mayor's report, and then we'll do the, what you're hearing after that. Okay? Mayor's report, Exhibit 3 in your packet describes the change your clock, change your battery week. And we've just changed our clocks, obviously. It's the tougher time to do it when we spring forward, but it is a reminder to us to change the batteries in our smoke detectors. And if you're at all like me, the smoke detector always goes off at the worst time, and then you have to hope that you have another one that's working and all that, in terms of the warning going off. So just a reminder to folks, because I think I saw in the memo, 3,000 people a year die in residential fires primarily because they don't have working and operating smoke detectors. And we just had a fire last year where the whole family was pretty much saved, right, because of operating smoke detectors. And it's a, it's a very serious thing. So take this moment to, after changing your clocks, go check those batteries out, make sure they're working, or change them out, actually. We want to change them completely. All right, and then also, there's a proclamation, Exhibit 4, National Poison Prevention Week. National Poison Prevention Week, and really awareness about this. You know, it comes about through stories, and I could just, you know, we have, we take it for granted sometimes that people understand that you just don't do certain things, like go through the medicine cabinet and start pulling off and popping pills from their, in other people's prescriptions, yet you'll get kids that do that stuff. And you have to explain to them not to. And another one, and I just thought of this as an awareness little data point. I have six children, and the more children you have, the greater likelihood that something goofy is going to happen along these lines. But one of my children went away to college and began working at a fast food place and had to clean the back room one night, cleaning, gets out some bleach, starts going forward on the floor, scrubbing the floor. Eh, it worked okay with still some bleach, eh, let's try this ammonia over here. Pour the ammonia, starts scrubbing, and then start feeling, feeling a little bit strange. And calls her mom and says, you know, hey, you know, this happened to me, and I was feeling real bad and just had to get out of there, and then my boss got all mad at me, and I had no idea. So I said to my wife, you mean, you didn't tell this child that, you know, you don't blend bleach and ammonia? Well, why didn't you tell her growing up, you know? So it's an awareness thing. If you haven't told your child that you don't blend bleach and ammonia together, because it can be very, very dangerous and poisonous, please do so. But I'm sure every household has close calls, and that's one of ours. So please keep that in mind in Poison Prevention Week. All right, that concludes the mayor's report. Before we get to trustee reports, we need a motion to recess into a liquor commission meeting. Motion by Voss.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion carries. So now I need a motion to open the liquor commission meeting, okay?
I'll move.
Second.
Switching out our scorecard here. That was motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. That was motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Okay, we're now in session. Clerk, would you please call attendance?
Abernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Okay, we're in session now. We have a, on the agenda for the Liquor Control Commission, we first have approval of minutes from January thirteenth, exhibit one. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Motion by Kim?
Second.
Second by Meyer, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to exhibit two. This regards a proposed store, quick pick, at six thirty-five North Midlothian. The potential proprietors of this store, you guys are here tonight?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and make a presentation? Just for those watching and those here, this references the corner of one seventy-six and Midlothian on the southeast corner.
Yeah, that's correct. My name is Sanjay Jethwa. I'm living in Antioch, one one two five Gold Beach Lane, for last nine years in Lake County. He's my partner.
My name is Chitendra Hingu. I live in Wakanda for last two years, and I live in Lake County for almost, almost nine years.
He's a previous owner of the PTA management agency located in the site which grew to two thousand and eight.
Okay.
So basically, we submitted the letters, we don't have the presentation, like you're gentleman.
We have it here, right?
Okay.
Well, we have some?
Some, yeah, I submitted some information about us. So we, we purchased this property and we planning to open up a liquor store slash grocery store so people can come. They can buy the liquor, also grocery, and we are planning to have like a cell phone store in there also, so you can activate prepaid calling card, failure bill, money grant. So it's not just typical liquor store. We have variety of stuff for customers so they can come and do like one-stop shopping. Since we are the owner and the property owner, we are planning to stay in the village, we investing in community, try to make the property nice. We invested, just we finished with improving all, both unit with LED lighting. We just project they garden yesterday. So we are planning to stay here a long time. And the other thing, I had owned two gas stations in Tampa for about a year and a half, which I submitted the report from the tobacco commission, and I had no ticket for selling to minors or underage. I have two teenagers, one is in Purdue College, and the other one going to start in UIC. So I know how, you know, I'm also concerned about underage drinking. And we're not here to make money selling underage. We are here to sell the, say to the community and be a good citizen. We can prove that once we get chance.
I used to own store on six oh five North Midlothian Road for ten years, which I had just had tobacco license. And, and we have a good, we had a good track record, ten years. And I will be the main major running the store for like this new store. And that's it, yeah.
Okay. Trustee, do you have questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, this, this store, you said it's going to be a grocery store with prepaid phone cards and all that. It sounds like a kind of a mini mart type. What would, what would you compare your store to be with the old PK Pantry? Because PK Pantry, you never had a liquor license, did you?
No.
So is this basically going to be PK Pantry, but you want a liquor license?
Yeah. But we will have like a less grocery and like whatever come with the liquor.
Back, back when you owned PKs?
Right.
Did you ever approach the village about getting a liquor license?
Ah, yes, that time we did, but that time mayor say there is no, he just say there is nothing available right now.
And the reason is, if you drive through Mundeline and check who doesn't have liquor licenses, convenience stores and gas stations, they don't. And this village has never given a liquor license to a store like yours, like you're proposing. The other challenge I have is the parking lot where the former PKs is. A lot of kids who can't park at Mundeline High School because they're not old enough, park there. And I just have a real problem with making it that much easier for the high school kids that are parking, and those will be sophomores that use the lot right there. And they're not supposed to, but they do. And they have access, you know, to liquor right there. I'm not in favor of this, never have been, and I try to be open-minded. I've been here a long time, and this is one thing I'm, I'm pretty deeply stuck on as far as not permitting. If you were requesting an actual liquor store, there was completely separate, separate counters, doors, barrier wall. It's a whole different lease than a convenience center. You know, I, I've always been open to an actual liquor store, but not what you're trying to do.
So, let me say something. So the main plan for us was to open up a liquor store. But then we got the later, there was no available license right now at the point in Mundeline. So we thought, okay, maybe we can open up a convenience store and then maybe try for the future. But we have a two unit, so we plan to combine, I mean, we can go, if we get liquor license, we can go totally liquor. We don't have to wear grocery. If, if the law says, you know, if you have liquor, no grocery, that's fine with us. We are willing to do, if we get liquor license, we are ready for that. And also, we are talking with our POS developer, so every time they the sale of liquor, the register going to promptly to scan the ID. And our scanner is capable of scanning the whole fifty state ID. So because if people bring the fake ID, they can change the name in the front. But the travel license barcode in the back is very hard to change. So that's going to read the name, address, and the birthday, and the register, whoever is at the register, going to match the front of the license, make sure the name, birthday, and it's matching. So that's why we're putting money into those systems so we can track everything. We won't be giving any data, we just validating, make sure the license.
The kind of system Target uses and?
Right.
It's top shelf, it's fantastic, but you have my opinion, so.
Right, yeah.
I'll be quiet.
No, like I say, we are ready, you know, we can go strictly liquor, we don't wear any other in there, if we get liquor license, that's fine with us. We are work either way, we are ready to do, you know.
Trustee Voss?
Well, you know, when the mayor first talked to me about this, I thought, you know, I agreed with trustee Semple. It's too close to the high school, there are high schoolers that park there. And then I thought, you know, got CVS right on the corner, this isn't any closer than CVS. And I know you get high schoolers that park over by CVS or over by the church and walk through the CVS parking lot. So this really has to do with management. And I don't really have a problem with issuing a liquor license for that location. But I can tell you that if you have a liquor violation, since you are so close to that high school, you know, I'm going to be like a, you get one and you're out kind of thing. I am not going to tolerate underage sales.
So let me say something about that. I am ready to do like a one-year contract. Within one year, if we get any violation, we are willing to close the liquor store, convert to something else. I am determined with the system we have and the operator we have, and my past record, I had six employee working in two gas station. We never got any violation, not even for tobacco. And we had the liquor in both gas station.
Anyone else want to, yeah, trustee Kim?
Yeah, I might just throw a little comment in there. It's true that the CVS across the street does sell alcohol as well. My concern was kind of the proximity, but if you have an electronic system and in your history, you've never had a single violation, this sounds very helpful to me. My comment is that I'm really glad that there's development in that shopping mall, because without, I mean, there wasn't really much going on, and you bought two units, which are consolidating into one larger one.
Yeah, actually, there's a three unit, one with a vacuum, he's going to rent, and we're going to continue to rent him. So we're going to consolidate the other two unit. But you are correct, the shopping center is kind of dead, nothing moving, nothing moving, whatever.
You purchased the whole building, correct?
There is a three, they could be two owners in the property. So the firstly unit, we saw the vacuum plant.
Yeah.
And there was a fantastic sand and a karate, those three unit, yeah, we purchased it. The other six unit is belong to Mr. Meyer.
Could you maybe do something about the wood paneling on the outside, or?
Was that?
I wasn't kidding, no, I'm just kidding. But, but the outside wood paneling, would you be updating that too when you?
Oh, the one by the balcony?
Um, just outside, like the whole entire strip is all wood paneling outside. Would you be working on the exterior as well as the interior?
Yes, we are trying to invest in the properties to make it nice. The other question I had, if there is a financing available from the TIF, so we can do the front facelifting of the property, if it's possible. But my future plan is to redo the whole outside, make it look nicer.
It's far from the TIF, though, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not in the TIF.
This would be the incentive.
Oh, the incentive agreement, okay.
We haven't implemented it yet, but that's what you're discussing is the incentive plan, the incentive program.
Well, I, I'll back and refer to trustee Semple's concern that gas stations and mini marts found upon, or at least we feel that this is not a location for liquor sales. I think that's because underage customers implemented all of areas, buy a loaf of bread and maybe hide a bottle under their coat on the way out. I hesitate to feel that we should authorize liquor license for them, which is what it's going to be. We wanted to seek a license liquor store. Nothing but olives and cherries and potato chips. Minimal to thinking about that. Second concern I have is what your competitive environment will be into the future. And you were not thinking of a year or two, you were thinking of permanent location. You realize you were liable to face across the street, seventy thousand square feet of, you know, space as a grocery store, a large amount of competition regarding the sale of beer, wine, and alcohol, other alcoholic drinks. And I would hate to see that render your competitive position to the point where you can't succeed anyone. Thinking of the adverse thoughts regarding the mini mart, mini mart liquor licenses, we have across the street a drugstore with a liquor license that was decently granted. So it's, I guess I'm, I could go either way. Getting the space used and these guys to work. I'd have to hear from everybody else, I guess.
Okay. I'm trying to ascertain what you're.
I think, I think that ambivalence is something we've talked about before in regards to?
Okay.
These little liquor sales.
Trustee Abernathy?
I would prefer a straight-out liquor store. And I can understand where trustee Semple's coming with a mini mart and gas stations, and I guess that is something. But we have CVS right across the street that has liquor license, that we allow a liquor license to. So why, where's the, I guess my problem is, is they're just as in close proximity to the school. So it wouldn't be fair to deny them a liquor license when we're giving one to CVS across the street. So I guess I'd be okay with creating a liquor license.
For the convenience store or the straight liquor store is what I'm, I don't know.
Well, CVS is a glorified convenience store, isn't it? So I guess if that's what they want to do, then I, I get, I don't understand the difference between allowing CVS and not allowing convenience store.
And I would agree, because CVS is essentially a mini mart with drugs and a lot of other amenities. I mean, it's a small little department store with groceries and alcohol. And the only difference that I really see is that CVS is a big corporation who has a lot of weight behind them, which is, you know, part of why they can get a liquor license. Versus a business owner who's struggling, you know, who's a small business owner, and why we would put them at a disadvantage when we wouldn't put CVS or Walgreens at a disadvantage. I don't see the distinction, and I don't see that we would deny one and allow the other.
CVS keeps their liquor in a far different manner, if I'm not mistaken, isn't it? Help me out here.
No, Walgreens is right on the shelf.
Yeah, CVS, it's right on the shelf.
Well, because when they pitched us the liquor license, there were standards that they were going to use different from, so.
They have like safety lids on them that have to be removed, but they're on the shelf.
They're on the shelf.
And I think, you know, trustee Meyer, I think part of, it's not just that they have a big name, being Walgreens or CVS. I think that there was some representation that they would be more secure, that there are security, I don't know what these things are, that they could make sure that no one is, you know, that beep, beep, beep if you walk out with something you haven't paid for. That smaller stores wouldn't have, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I think what was just Scottson, I'm hoping ended up there with CVS is, I think the doors where the alcohol is kept in the coolers has some type of audible alarm when they're open. So that the person up front knows that somebody's. Now, did it end up there, I can't say.
Even when you walk through the liquor area at CVS, it beeps alarms. The staff that there's somebody even approaching.
And there was some, and that was a concern of the prior board, because they're close proximity to us.
I would just add one other thing. It would be very hard for staff, if not impossible, to try and distinguish between a packaged liquor store that sells chips, let's say, and a convenience store that sells alcohol. Almost indistinguishable, and unless there's been some change in the, I think we all know what that means, but when is too many bags of chips or peanuts or other things all of a sudden become a convenience store?
I think we can work that out. What's, well, then how come the other liquor stores in town are liquor stores and not convenience?
Well, they just choose, that's their business model. And I'm not so, I'm not so sure we can work that out, because I think when you give a liquor license, it's a packaged liquor license, and they would have the same rights as every other packaged liquor license. I don't think we can place conditions on the issuance of a liquor license. We don't have that kind of a category. So I think you either do it or you don't do it.
And how do you do it for grocery stores?
They have the same type of liquor store, or I mean, same type of liquor license as a small packaged liquor store, it's a class, but they're the same.
I mean, a grocery store and a convenience store, one's a larger model.
But there was discussion about perhaps allowing just a packaged liquor store. And if I walk into a packaged liquor store that exists today, for example, I won't pick on Armanetti's, so let's say Armanetti's.
Uh, yeah, I don't know if it's DeCarlo's, I don't know what it calls now.
Uh, if I walk in there, they sell a lot of things other than packaged liquor. And so, somebody may refer to that as a convenience store, some may refer to it as a packaged liquor store.
No, that's a liquor store.
That's a liquor store.
That's real easy. Liquor stores are liquor stores, um, convenience stores...
It's easy until you have to draw that distinction.
I, I wouldn't have a problem with either license either way, convenience store or, or, or he a liquor store. And I see no reason why they couldn't have it as a convenience store.
Well, I mean, you're pretty much opening up the floodgates. If you're gonna say, because CVS has, is a convenience store with liquor, um, then we can, really, there's no reason to say no to anyone else.
And that's how I've sort of felt all along.
I know you've felt that way all along.
And I don't even drink.
Yeah, I'm not a drinker either.
Don't like it.
But, uh, you know, something like this, I mean...
I know, I'm sorry, Ed, I've disappointed you. I just don't like the taste of alcohol.
Chief, do you have a opinion that you would like us to hear on this?
I would say that, uh, I don't see the benefits of it. We already have seventeen Class B liquor licenses in the community. It's not that it's on the angle, somebody else can get it. Proximity to the school does concern. Uh, and this is slightly different from CVS, that this is a full liquor store as opposed to the beer and wine that's either. But, uh, if you're going to choose between the two, uh, I would prefer it also be a full liquor store. And the purpose why I'd say that is, uh, pick any liquor store, uh, you named Carlo. There really isn't a need or a reason for an underage person to leave that store in the atmosphere as that is such. For them to walk in to buy a bag of peanuts at that store is somewhat alarming, both to the employees, but also to the officers that are running, as opposed to what the business model I saw, which is virtually half and half, half liquor over here, half groceries over here, two giant coolers, a store strength, and energy drinks, and soda pop, uh, almost somewhat frightening to, uh, to do that. So, um, and that's my, that's my say on it. And you are right, Mayor, I do think you are somewhat over the floodgates you started pressing through, so consider that, that's my comment.
I have a quick question about liquor stores in general. Uh, can people under the age of twenty-one go into a liquor store to buy a bag of peanuts? Okay, 'cause I remember going into liquor stores and buy Coke when I was younger. I didn't know if there was a difference in age restriction to enter the place. Okay.
Well, let me throw this out there. I mean, is there any interest in asking them to redo the arrangement so that the liquor is highly confined? I mean, you're opening it up. I mean, I don't see us having any grounds to say no to anyone else. If you, you elect to do this, because there's a lot of convenience stores, gas stations will be coming in next.
May I ask the petitioners? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wha- what is it that your ideal dream is to do at this place? Did you want a convenience store with liquor? Or did you first off want a liquor store and then you changed it because of the letter you received?
The first plan was to have the package liquor store, but then we heard that there is no available license, so we started, because we already had the contractor signed and money was invested, and we don't wanna start construction, so we said, okay, we go ahead and start a convenience store, that will have, try for the liquor license.
Okay, so your ideal was a package liquor store?
Yeah, yeah. So, like I say, we are ready to just say, okay, package liquor store, I'll throw the milk out, bread out, that has the beer and wine and hot liquor.
And you would, in a packaged liquor store, have product offering that would be unlikely to attract underage individuals? That is, if an underage individual or someone that looked like they could possibly be underage, that would alert you?
Actually, any cell you scan, beer or wine is gonna prompt the register to scan the ID. So, it wants to do the process, the register won't open until you scan their ID. So, once you scan their ID...
I understand, to make a purchase.
Right, then you can make a purchase.
Would you wanna go back to your original intent?
Yes.
You would go to a straight liquor store with no groceries?
Yeah, with no groceries, yeah.
Yeah, we can work with the village as per requirement.
And there, I mean, there's chips and beer, I believe, but, you know, there is no, I don't know, they were making there. I'm probably gonna walk to a couple of liquor store and see how they set up, depending on like, you know, like Jazz Liquor or the other, DeCarlo Liquor, same money.
Let, let me try it, just, uh, maybe say it in a different way. Uh, the village board doesn't have the discretion, uh, to issue a Class B packaged liquor license to these gentlemen with the condition that it be just alcohol. So, they can represent today, and I'm not saying that's not what they're going to do, uh, is to have no, uh, food items, uh, and they could do that, but their business model could change without any notice to the village, uh, and they could turn that, that into fifty percent of the floor space be a convenience store and the other fifty percent be alcoholic beverages. So, with that there, discretion, how they do that. The only decision for the board is to create a Class B packaged liquor license or not.
And that's no different than any other store?
Correct. Right. I just, I got a little concerned 'cause the board's trying to draw a distinction between full package liquor and convenience store. That's really not...
Not within our authority, correct?
Right.
Actually, can I ask a question? Is it not within our authority because that's where our liquor licenses are set up or is it could never be within our authority? So, if we at some point wanted to issue a liquor license at a gas station or a mini market or convenience store, can we set up a separate liquor license for those or no?
If you're addressing that to me, maybe you'll have some time to check that out. We, we have never considered that possibility in the past. So, the way our Class B liquor license reads is it is just to sell packaged liquor in the original convenience. You could, you give a liquor license, a Class B liquor license, they can sell anything else they want on those premises. And the ordinance does not permit you to set any conditions. Whether or not, if they amend the ordinance, uh, so that you will have a different Class B one license in which only liquor would be served with, say, chips or peanuts or what, and I have to, you know, check with the state list.
Hey, thank you. I don't have a problem with issuing a liquor license.
Anyone else have further comments? Okay, so my count is four yeses, one no, and trustee Sullivan, did you wanna, after reflection? Okay. All right, with that said, you, uh, can move forward and there's a letter in here that gives you information on what to do beyond this. And, uh, you know, good luck to you, okay? All right?
Thank you.
Make it look nice.
Can I make a motion to adjourn this?
Yes, trustee Voss makes a motion to adjourn the liquor control commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Motion carries, so we are adjourned. Now, we need a motion to reconvene the village board meeting.
So, move.
Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Here.
Here. Sullivan?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Abernathy?
Present.
Very good. Uh, at this point in the village board meeting, we are at the trustee reports. Public Works Committee trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All righty. Okay, I have, um, two motions tonight under the control valve rehabilitation project, and that would be exhibit PW dash one. And the first motion I'd like to make is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract between the Village of Mundeline and RMS Utility Services for Control Valve Rehabilitation.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, excuse me, trustee Kim.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to state that the, uh, lower bid was actually half the cost of the other bid, so this is a great deal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the second motion that I have for tonight is a motion to authorize a purchase order for an amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and two dollars for said work to RMS Utility Services.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Brochet, anything else?
No.
All right, and that would be it for me tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Finance Committee trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have a motion that, uh, we expect someone will abstain from. It's motion to pay bills to AT&amp;T in the amount twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars, seventy-four cents, and I will make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Sorry, yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
This evening, uh, on our omnibus list of motions, we have motion to pay our bills. This totals, uh, the total bills to be paid, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, some of the, uh, larger amounts are, uh, one bill to the Joint Action Water Agency, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Another to the Environmental Protection Agency for our loan, taken up many years ago to upgrade and expand our wastewater treatment plant. This is the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. Uh, you will not see that listed as a motion separate because we approved that payment, off the door, so, in conjunction with the one, two at a time. We also have a payment to, uh, golfer of the Mundeline Crossing subdivision, Target and Home Depot, for our tax, sales tax rebate agreement. Getting close to the end of that. This payment is for one hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Plus, anyone has question? Bill list or matters of finance?
Thank you. Next, Public Safety Committee trustee Semple.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two, uh, motions on the agenda this evening, both of them pertaining to the police department. Uh, they're both very self-explanatory. Uh, first one is regarding basically a generator solution for uninterrupted power, and then the second one is for an upgrade, uh, to the telephone system utilizing IP technology. With that, I'll make the first motion on the agenda, which is a motion to adopt a resolution to waive the formal bid process and authorize the purchase and payment of the uninterrupted power source from D and B Power Associates, Inc., at a cost of twenty thousand, eight hundred, seventy dollars, seen as exhibit Public Safety dash one in your board packets this evening.
Motion, motion by Semple, second by Abernathy, discussion.
Yes, please.
Trustee Voss.
I was wondering if, um, perhaps chief could explain why we didn't go out to bid? There were two vendors that were contacted and why they weren't contacted and we didn't bid this.
We met with, uh, our provider for our nine-one-one system who recommended that we speak with both of these vendors. Um, there are very limited vendors available for this. In fact, it used to be an option on the state bid, but they removed it because it's so specific in nature as to what it provides. They were both in proximity, closeness to us and were able to give us that price, so, or give us a quote. We actually met with the, with the second first, the storage, storage battery systems was the first vendor we met with and was preferred through Radacom, who's our nine-one-one service provider. But then we sought that second bid from this other company. They were able to provide a similar system which was cheaper, so, um, I, that answers your question.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second last motion, Mr. Mayor, is a motion to adopt a resolution waiving the formal bidding procedures for the purchase of a ShoreTel IP telephony system for the Mundeline Police Department from Black Box Network Services at eight-five-one Bussy Road in Alka-Gro Village, Illinois, seen as exhibit Public Safety dash two in your board packets this evening.
Motion by Semple?
Second.
Second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief Sashco. While we're on police, anything, uh, you'd like to bring up? Any reason for an upcoming meeting call? Chief Gunther, while we're talking, please. All right, Sashco.
No, and I just have a couple of announcements, just a reminder for our April nineteenth blood drive and also to the mayor's point earlier with our proclamation for smoke detectors. Uh, there are, uh, units on the market now, they're ten-year batteries, they're the life of the detector, so, uh, you can just, you know, notify the general public that those are available on the market now, and then you don't have to go through this litany, but of course, we always have the generational cycle.
What do those cost? Do you have any idea?
Um, they're not that much more expensive. They're only about ten to fifteen dollars more per unit. So, that is the new standard in the industry now is they're gonna all be, they are all built with the battery built into them, so, it's a little bit nicer. And it lasts ten years, and that's pretty much the life of the detector. And then also a reminder for CO detectors too, we always focus on smoke detectors, but still in that part of the season where that's important.
Chief Sashco, you said like the newer technology ones, those are the ten-year?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on, community and economic development committee trustee Voss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first up, I have, uh, a couple of new businesses. Um, first of all, over the weekend, we had the grand opening of RKB kitchens and bathrooms. We had a line out the door, in case you didn't make it, um, for the, uh, people to get signatures of the eighty-five fairs. of the eighty-five fairs that were there. But the showroom itself is quite remarkable, and if you haven't made it, they're on, I think it's two sixteen Terrace Drive, and it's definitely worth the trip. We also have a new furniture store that's opened at eight-twenty-three South Lake Street in Versions. And then we have a couple, we have something under new management, and a medical device manufacturer specializing in reusable laparoscopy instruments, which opened on Tower Road. So as always, we encourage everyone to shop Mundaline when you can, especially shop Mundaline first. So then moving on, as soon as I can get this to open. There we go. We have Amcor Flexibles that I have three motions for. So the first motion is to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings effect, as seen as CEDC dash one, and I'll make that motion.
Motion by Boss, second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Motion by Boss, second. Second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, I'll make a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a variation to section twenty-point-four-oh-point-zero-three-zero of the Mundaline Municipal Code to allow a height increase from thirty-five feet to sixty feet for silos in the M-one General Manufacturing District for Amcor Flexibles at nineteen-nineteen South Butterfield Road.
Second. Motion by Boss, second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Simple? Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, this weekend is the Mundaline Music Invitational. They have different groups that come and sing in bands. If you haven't ever been, it's a great community activity. They have people from out of state that come and from within the state that come as well.
Thank you.
And should I ask how the Mundaline Mayor's Math Cup went yesterday?
The Mayor's Cup Math Challenge was yesterday at Mundaline High School. It was great. We had lots and lots of students there, and we raised over four thousand dollars from businesses locally here to give out as prizes. And the winner at the varsity level was Zach Gleason from Carmel High School, and he's attending U of I and an engineering major. So the whole point is to really foster, really, I guess, use it as a way to grow engineers, get more engineers, as I explained to the kids. You know, you gave me an opportunity, so. But
An open industry.
For every engineer that gets, watch this though, for every engineer that gets hired by a startup firm, that firm has to hire five other support staff. And so it's vital to our economy to get more and more kids into tech and to get them into those tech fields, because that's, our future economy is gonna really rely on those folks. So, thank you for asking.
You're very welcome. Alright, and that's all I have for community development.
Okay, next, marketing and communication.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing written down here, but as you all know, we had a branding meeting at the committee of the whole right before this. Everybody wanna say some words on it? No, it was pretty alright. Dawn, is there anything coming up or any meetings to call that I should mention?
Not, nothing to report at this moment.
Okay, and then Lovato, is there anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Kim. Next, we have Transportation and Infrastructure Committee trustee Abernathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things this evening. First, we have the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant, which you'll find in your exhibit TNI dash one. So my first motion is to authorize the mayor to execute the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities Grant Award Number twelve-dash-two-oh-three-four-fifty-three Agreement for improvements to be made at the Mendelthean Road entrance to Mundaline Park and Recreation District's Keith Maione Community Park.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh. Thank you. Quick on the draw. Trustee Sullivan.
Mendelthean Road is under the jurisdiction of Lake County, and we've cooperated with them to provide them a location for their interconnect between this particular signal that's put in. Even Winchester, further to the north, that Peterson Road and Winchester. Is Lake Dot, Lake County Department of Transportation, wanting to take over the maintenance requirements? Are they the ones that
No, will be responsible for.
Will be responsible? It's their road.
Correct.
There's a sizable number here for all kinds of engineering, design, most engineering, well, it's complete the design. Design, I thought the design was complete.
It is for completion of the design as well as the construction engineering on the project.
Completed design, there's more work on the design engineering?
More just a cleanup of the existing, updating cost estimates, things of that nature.
One of the concerns of Lake Dot originally was the entrance into the north parking lot was two feet away, forty feet away from there right away. Finally agreed on a light-in, light-out as you're leaving, as the only access to that address.
Yes.
Very good. There is, I don't see it here, perhaps because I don't have my glasses. Is it seventy thousand dollars of engineering that we've, if I remember correctly?
That is correct.
For a three-hundred-and-thousand-dollar project, the design engineering, which is almost
Yes, this also includes the construction engineering or the phase three.
Yeah. Section.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I think it says here, and I've forgotten, but how much, this is estimated, our grant is three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. How much of that is amount of, what percentage of the total project do we think that'll be?
At this point, probably about eighty-five, eighty-eighty-five percent of it.
Park district is budge twenty-eight thousand?
They're budge twenty-eight.
Now, go and check. I think Polte built the subdivision across the road.
Yes.
Is there not an amount invited in us, S Road? Yes, there was a, yeah, there was a small amount at the time that that was contemplated, gosh, I don't know, eight years, like a long time ago, maybe longer. There was twenty thousand dollars that they had provided the village for a pedestrian crosswalk, so. That's available? Yeah, that money would be used for this project. So this is a funded project? Best we can tell with engineers' estimates. We won't know for sure until we go to bid. Okay, very good. But we're close. We're close. Sorry. I read.
Anyone else? Nope? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, then I also have a motion to approve an engineering services agreement in the amount of seventy thousand, six hundred, eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents to Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick, Inc., and authorize their Director of Public Works and Engineering to sign the agreement.
Second motion.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, then also, we have something for the Chicago Avenue Extension and Facility Driveway Improvements to go out to bid. A motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract between the Village of Mundaline and Chicagoland Paving for the Chicago Avenue Extension and Driveway Improvement Projects.
Motion, motion by Abernathy, second by Simple, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then a motion to authorize a purchase over, a purchase over, purchase order. Sorry, I said purchase, purchase order for an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and fifty cents for said project to Chicagoland Paving, Inc.
Second motion.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That is all I have for you tonight. Mr. Boucher, anything?
Nope.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Other reports. Does the trustee have any other reports, items to bring up? No? Okay. Very good. Let's go to the scheduled business, omnibus vote items. We have exhibit, or excuse me, we have items A, B, C, D, and E. Does any trustee wish to pull one or more of the items off the omnibus vote list?
A, please, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
A?
A?
Yes.
A is an apple, okay?
B, please.
B?
Yes.
B. Anyone else? Okay, so I need a motion to pass items C, D, and E on the omnibus vote items.
So move.
Motion by Kim, second by Boss, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to item A. Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that the two changes are, it's just, it's an inconsistency error from, that was carried over. It's not an actual changing of zones, because I know it was published in all the newspapers and everything, but there is no actual zone changing. It was just some carried over, like for example, see if I can find it, but the school slash institute area. The school didn't carry over to the correct zone, and so we're changing that.
That is correct. We're not, we're not doing any rezoning of any, of any sort. We're just cleaning up errors that we made, that were made in the last call round.
Okay.
Again, we're not intending to rezone any properties. This is just a cleanup matter.
Okay, that was my understanding, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to pass A?
Yes, I will. Motion to pass an ordinance granting approval of the official zoning map for the Village of Mundaline, Illinois.
Motion by Kim, second by Abernathy, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to item B, trustee Boss.
Item B is a motion authorizing the village administrator's signature on an application for the Planning and Zoning Commission and the village board to consider a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. I thought perhaps we might wanna explain who the village administrator is petitioning. Why, why are we doing this? We make, we make changes to ordinances all the time. We don't generally petition ourselves.
Yeah. It's a good question. What this relates to is that anytime, this goes back to our discussion with the board's discussion at committee, the whole meeting regarding the changes that are coming with the sale of cannabis and the growing cannabis. And the board passed a resolution that said that the planning commission would consider where this would be appropriate use to do both of those things. And so to do that, we currently don't provide for the growing of cannabis or the sale of cannabis because it's illegal, and so therefore, it's not in our zoning ordinance. And as a result, the planning commission has to consider a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that would provide an appropriate zoning for both of those activities. And so there has to be a petition that goes before the planning commission because it will be a public hearing. And so the board's action tonight is authorizing me to sign that petition for the petition to go forward and conduct the planning commission, planning and zoning commission to conduct the public hearing on that matter, to make a recommendation, to come back to the board with their findings. So that's what the board is suing.
So anytime that we wanna consider a zoning change, we would have to ask you?
Yes. You can authorize myself, authorize the mayor, would be the appropriate action to file a petition otherwise. And anybody can actually file a petition to make a text amendment to our zoning ordinance. Residents can, anybody can make that petition. In this instance, it's the village board, so there has to be a signature on that application.
I guess I just, in my tenure on the board, I don't ever remember us doing
The request, the request that we're making this evening is no different from the request that we made last year when we went through a series of amendments shortly after the adoption of the zoning code. So, you know, we're just, we're following that same process, and actually, the request that we're making this evening will also be the request that we'll be making in a couple of weeks from now, authorizing a signature on yet another application for another series of amendments that we're working on to the zoning code.
Okay, alright. Well then, I guess I'll make a motion to authorize the village administrator's signature on an application for the Planning and Zoning Commission and village board to consider text amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding cannabis cultivation centers and distribution facilities.
Second.
Motion by Boss, second by Abernathy, discussion. Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Victor, does giving, giving the authorization to the village administrator streamline a a process versus what we would have normally done?
It doesn't. It doesn't. It just formalizes the process and it puts the village in the same situation as any other applicant. So all you're doing here is just acknowledging the fact that here the village is the one requesting this change, and we're taking it through the process as we would any other applicant.
So when this goes before the plan commission, do we appear?
No, but, but they, that's a good point. I was just thinking there could be possibly that Chief Gunther would possibly be in attendance because there may be questions from the planning commission as it relates to some of the law enforcement things. I know that the planning staff has been involved in the countywide meetings to do that, so we could be called upon to, you know, expert witness if you know, but at least to give testimony during the public hearing process that the planning commission. The planning commission could quite frankly request some other expert show up. Just not sure, but we're going to get public comment during that public board. They'll do that just as if we were a developer making a petition for the planning.
Okay. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Okay, that takes us to village staff reports. Village administrator, Mr. Lobato.
I have no report. There is one item under my report that I'm going to defer to Mr. Flynn. And, but before I do that, I just want to comment, it reminded me when I saw under finance the AT&amp;T bill, trustee Sullivan had requested that we dig into our phone bills a little bit and provide a report to the board, and so we're still working on that. So, other than that, I will refer the next item to Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, John. Just distributed the bid results from this afternoon's bid for the electrical aggregation. If you recall, two weeks ago, we authorized NYMAC to, NYMAC to conduct the bid. The bids came in today. They were significantly higher than what we had expected. So David Hoover is in the audience to explain the bid, the bids that we received today. And we do, the bids are, we had hoped the bids would come in in the six, higher, mid to high six range. They came in over seven, as you can see, so David can explain that. Though, we will be making a motion or asking for a motion to remove this item from the agenda and rebid the bids for aggregation and return them, return to the board at the next board meeting. So David can kind of let you know the background of what happened here, or what the bid results were.
If I, if I might, just a quick overview of the program, the aggregation program for the residents that you all put in place for the last 18 months has been a success. You have saved the residents approximately $275 that they would otherwise pay to ComEd. And that's about two and a half million dollars that you kept here in the community as opposed to sending to ComEd. So our hats off to you all for, you know, taking the initiative to do, to put this program and to help the residents. We are coming up on the renewal, and, and so there's some unusual things that you see before you as far as the pricing is concerned. The first, when you see this pricing, the first thing you may ask yourself is, well, how do we compare it to the ComEd rate? Because, let me just be clear, you have the option at the expiration of your program to put your program on suspense for a year and to roll everybody back to Commonwealth Edison. That is an option available to you. Unfortunately, we have a timing issue here because you need to make your decision before the ComEd rate comes out. So I know that's a little backwards, but that's just the way the timing has turned out to date. ComEd will release their rates at the end of May for the June 1 cycle. They release their rates a year at a time from June to May 31st. So we won't know those. So there's two possibilities in how you go to bid with the suppliers. We've asked them for a guarantee or some sort of assurance that you would, that your rate will always be lower than ComEd, or that you have the opportunity to suspend the program if it ever become the case. With the narrowing in the prices from where we've been in the past, suppliers are hesitant to do that. So as a result, if you look over in the third column from the left, you'll see rate guarantee. You'll see that the one supplier, First Energy, is the only one who gives us a guarantee. Let me just stipulate that the guarantee is essentially, it's not a guarantee, it's an escape clause, and it empowers you as the aggregator, the municipality, should you, should the rates drop down underneath the ComEd rates in the future, you have the option to pull the plug and at that time remove every, return everybody back to ComEd. So, in other words, let me give you an example. If you, if the, if you were to elect, the First Energy rate is 7.4 cents. And give you a hypothetical example, let's just assume that in June, ComEd sets the rate at eight cents. So you say, that's fine, we're saving everybody money. If they reset the rate again in year two at eight cents, that's fine, you're saving everybody money, your rate's still attractive. But in year three, they tend to set the rate at four cents. All of a sudden, you're at 7.4 cents, you're underwater. With that guarantee or that escape clause, you as the aggregator for the entire community could say, oh, wait a minute, that trip. So you could then declare, put the notice to the supplier, and you could send everybody in the community back to the lower ComEd rate. So that's a nice feature to have. That protects you all and makes sure that the residents are able to always enjoy the lower of the two. That's the good news. The bad news is, they're the only ones currently offering that rate. So if I can, let me just draw one more distinction, and I'll open up the questions. I'm sure that you've heard me talking enough here. But, so let's just draw the distinction between, you'll see here just in the marketplace, the three-year rate is the most attractive rate at the time. By the way, on the Constellation rate, the three-year rate's 7037. Just a point, if you elected that rate, the residents would pay 7037 all 36 months of the contract. It's not a step down. They pay the first rate, one rate, then it's a, it's the flat rate for the entire 36-month contract. So let me just compare the two. If you looked at the Constellation rate of 7037 versus the First Energy rate of 7.4, at first class, you say, oh, the Constellation is a better rate. But we don't know where the ComEd rate is going to come out over the next three years. And, and the option with Constellation is you, as the aggregator, would be committed to that rate for the duration if you select the 7037. So just to be clear, yeah, ComEd in year three again sets the rate at five cents. And your rate is now higher than the ComEd rate. The residents individually have the option of leaving with no penalty, no charges, no early termination fees. You could publish in a newsletter if you wanted to. You could say, hey, we did the very best we could. We saved you money for four years in a row now, but you know, this last year, we're not saving you money. You have the option individually to move back to Commonwealth Edison. That would be available in, in a non-guaranteed rate option. Just to draw the distinction, if you were to select the First Energy rate with a guarantee, you could go along if the 7.4 cent rate were higher, lower than the ComEd rate for a year or for two, and in year three, the rate, ComEd sets the rate at five cents. At that particular time, since you have the option, you could say, oh, you as, you could put the notice to the supplier, and you as the aggregator can unilaterally move everybody in the aggregation back to the lower Commonwealth Edison rate. So that's the main distinction that you'll see in that rate guarantee option and what that is. And that can be an attractive feature. Unfortunately, the trade-off you're going to see is, is to have that option, there's a little bit of a cost premium to that.
So can I just ask, this year, the ComEd rates are between seven and seven and a half cents?
We're estimating that's where we think the ComEd rate may end up in June when they set the rate. That's our estimate.
And what, what are they currently?
Current, it's currently six. And your rate is currently 4.77. So you're cur-
This is a huge increase.
It is.
Okay, and then on this handout that I assume you know that we're looking at, it says customer service and it has these stars. Could you tell me? Some of them are five, some of them are four, and some of them are three. Is it better to have more or fewer?
Better to have more.
Okay.
These are ratings that the ICC puts out, so we, we publish those for you so that you have a sense of the carriers. They relate to the number of complaints that the ICC receives across the board. We give that to you, but we also will tell you that if we have any reservations about them doing their job, we wouldn't put them on here, so.
And, lastly, sorry, if we rebid this, or we're rebidding it to the same companies, why do you expect to be different?
These rates, we've been bidding, we've bid last week. We bid some communities nearby with some pretty attractive rates. These came in higher. I don't know if it was the marketplace. But I, my recommendation is to wait two weeks and see if the marketplace settles down a little bit. These rates are higher than what we've been seeing over the last week or two.
Okay, thank you.
Early termination-
But just to the point, they may come back higher, so.
Early termination fee, does that mean the individual could opt out of the plan if they want to?
That is correct. All of the plans going forward have no early termination fee. So at any time, any resident gets a better offer, likes the ComEd rate, doesn't like the color of the bill from your supplier, they can leave.
Okay, so it's not that, like you said, with the rate guarantee option with First Energy, say they give us a rate guarantee that it, that ComEd's going to be lower. If I, as John Smith at this home, we have, we go with First Energy and, say we say we pick Constellation, okay, at 7037, but I said it comes out, ComEd's at six and a half. So I, as a person, can say, I don't want to do this.
You as a resident can at any time on any of these plans leave at any time for any reason for no fee.
Okay.
The, the guarantee, now it's going to be, the guarantee we're talking about applies to you, the municipality as the aggregator, to unilaterally move everybody if you feel a team in their best interest. It gives you more flexibility. It's nice to have. I wish the rates were the same. It'd be pretty easy to take them. So my hope is in a couple of weeks, we, you know, come back. And unfortunately, the reason I'm drawing this out is I don't think I'll be able to be here in two weeks. But you're going to see numbers pretty similar, so I wanted to force the conversation while I'm here. And I'll have a conversation with Mike that afternoon when the rates come in. But the, the choice will be to continue the program or put it on suspense. And if you continue the program, how valuable is the guarantee to yourself? So let me just give you an example of a, some nearby communities that just renewed theirs. They took a option similar to Constellation. It wasn't quite as high as seven, it was in the mid-sixes. And their view was, we'll save our residents, let me just say, the guaranteed rate was a couple tenths of a cent higher. And so these, this community said, we'll take the Constellation rate. We know we're locked into it for all three years, but they felt that this savings would more than warrant that. And they had the guarantee, they had the option for the resident, if it was reset in year three, that they would inform the residents that we did the best we could. You're free to make a 30-second phone call. I'll give them a phone call to ComEd. I, I retract that. And to say, you know, please move me back. So again, my plan is to have new rates, a new rate sheet identical to this with updated numbers. We'll hope that the rates drop off. We'll certainly hope that the, the First Energy rate drops. Let me just suggest that I consider a, a high premium at First Energy with the rate guarantee. What that just does, I don't know what the ComEd rate will be when they set it in June of this year. They may set it at 6.9, and if that's the case, I don't want to lock you into a rate higher. So the, just so I understand, that the guarantee gives you all maximum flexibility that even if you enter into a program today, and even before the program starts in July, if the ComEd rate comes out and it's set unusually low, either in month one or in month 27, you have the opportunity to wave the white flag and to return everybody to Commonwealth Edison.
Yeah, since the rates are set in June, we seem to be like off-cycle where we're forced into doing it before. Is there any way to somehow get it where we have to make this decision after ComEd sets their rates?
We don't have that option presently, but if you all choose to suspend the program for a year, then we would have that option again next year when, when, when it comes back up. Because the, the rules state that once you come back to ComEd, you being any ComEd account holder, residential or commercial, when you come back to Commonwealth Edison, you basically have to stay there for a year.
And you can't like get a couple-month extension on the current-
We tried those prices, and they were prohibitive.
Because it seems like we're always going to be behind the eight ball going forward every single year with that same type of speculation.
The problem, yes. So you would like to know, so you would like to go to bid in June once you have the ComEd rate set in, in May. I appreciate that. Unfortunately, ComEd for the first time now has the right to come in and reset the rate again in September. So they just went to the ICC and said, there's so many changes going on. We'll set a rate, but we reserve the right to reset it again. In addition to that, there is a monthly, I'll call it a true-up, it's, it's an adjustment that is added to a resident's bill who gets their power from Commonwealth Edison. That can swing a half a cent positive, a half a cent negative. All that to say, I, the good old days were, tell me what the ComEd rates, can we beat it? The ComEd rate is now, in the future, more like that. So that's why, again, the premium I appreciate is, if you have the guarantee, we'll track it for you on an ongoing basis, you know, against this moving target. And you have the flexibility to say, yeah, you're in.
And I really appreciate that explanation because that helps make it more sense that it's not a fixed all-year-round.
Yeah, it used to be, it used to be, and it was great. But unfortunately, the more, the more we get into it. The first time we did this two years ago, it was a no-brainer. And we just, it was a home run. You guys did a great job, your residents. Now it gets to be, you know, a little bit more.
But the second component that you've brought up in your clarification says that, you know, if the ComRed, Commonwealth Edison rates are lower and we do suspend, even in that year's suspension, if you're saying it's like a roller coaster, you may have some months that might be good and some months that might be bad based under how you're portraying it now.
Well, let's see, here's the, yeah, that's correct. And here's the irony is that, let's say you do this and you lock into a rate, and then it's attractive for the first year, just to give you a hypothetical. Let's assume that next June they set a rate, and let's say it's lower than your rate. So you say, okay, let's go back. Well, then you go back, and then ComEd resets the rate in the fall, and maybe it's higher. But now you're locked in for 12 months. So it's, it's, unfortunately, it's, it was nice when it was a real clear line in the sand with ComEd rate. It was just to save you money in the past, but we knew we couldn't guarantee the best, so we always have an open door policy. You're free to leave, no charge, no early term fee.
I have two questions. First, we're going to say, you know, once rates go up, we'll be asked by residents, why in the world do they go up so much?
Yeah.
So can you explain maybe from a macroeconomic perspective why this is happening?
Yeah, so there's two main reasons that go into this. One is, one is there is a, a regulated charge that, not a ComEd rate, but it's a regulated transmission charge that is embedded in these power rates that will go up at least a penny come June 1st. So we expect the ComEd rate to basically go from six cents to at least seven cents just because of that one transmission charge.
Is that a tax? Where's that from?
It is a, it is a regulated charge paid to, that money goes to the suppliers, the generators, excuse me, to ensure that there is ample capacity available in the peak periods of times such as in the middle of July or August when it's 110 degrees, or last January when our usage here in Northern Illinois went up 30% higher than norm because heaters were running so much. That is, it's called capacity. It's regulated by the ICC. It's actually fit out. And strangely, it moves in very large chunks, in very large instrument. And so it's going to be high for year one, it's going to be high for year two, and it drops off in year three, which is why, when you look at these rates, three years is the sweet spot. So that's part of it. And the other part of it is, unfortunately, just the power market has moved up about 10%, 15% a year since we've done our last bid. So combination of two, it's the market moving up and it's the, and it's this regulated charge which everybody will pay.
Okay, and then next, you just described a situation where people can just change. To me, that's just setting everyone up to be a target for telemarketers to come in and try and get them to change. I mean, is that kind of what's going to happen, is that everyone's now a sitting duck to get these phone calls and these robo-calls to try and get them to switch over?
Well, unfortunately, that's happening now.
Yeah.
Anyway, and I, and that's, that's the free market, and nobody can do anything about that. It's just part of the, you know, my, my halfway comedic line is, now I know where all the people who 25 years ago, when I used to sit down for dinner at 6:00, called me to switch long-distance carrier. I don't know where they've been for the last 22 years, but now I know where they've surfaced again. Because now they're out knocking on doors and calling.
They're over here.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, trustee someone?
Is it safe to say, Dave, that we could tell our constituents to ignore these calls? That there is no way they can get a better rate? That there is no way they can get a better rate for electricity, transmission, of course?
Yeah.
But the situation is hard for me to understand.
Yeah.
You're talking about buying from Commonwealth Edison. Actually, they're just driving the milk trucks, they're not a farmer.
That's right, yeah, that's just, the ComEd rate is a pass-through rate, it's not from ComEd.
So is it safe for us to tell our residents to ignore these calls? That there's no way they're going to get a better deal, but we can arrange for them through aggregation?
It is safe to say, first of all, that the aggregating supplier that you all work with will never come to their door and will never call them. So it's safe to say that anybody who's calling them on the phone or knocking on the door is not going to be part of the Village program. So that's a, that's a distinction. After that, I can't absolutely unilaterally say that there's never going to be a program that's better than ours. I can say that I've never seen one. And because just the rates that aggregate, and that's why, I mean, the number of suppliers are dropping as we go to bid because I think they're starting to say, wow, the margins are so thin. I'll just, I'd rather hire telemarketers and get better margins than my deals. But I can't, I can't tell you, and you can't say that anyway. I presume somebody in the room may challenge you on that. But I could say, you could say that it's highly unlikely that any, anybody knocking on the door or calling their phone would be able to have a rate better. And if they do, and if they do, have them call me, have them call Mike and have them call me and I'll be glad to find out.
In the past two years, I've been real comfortable saying 4.7 cents.
Yeah.
Ignore these people, they're, they're, I'm going to ride.
That's correct.
Now this is.
Well, I think that, I think the, I think the merits of aggregation still hold true. I think they hold truer now than they ever will. And I think going forward, they will too. I think our rates will be good. The ComEd rate is, you know, it's a published rate, well, it's a published rate. And we'll see what that comes out to be, so.
If we rebid this, what are you anticipating on ComEd?
You know, I would like to, you know, I would hope that the First Energy rate for three would be closer to the ComEd rate, or excuse me, the Constellation rate, you know, I would, it would drop, it'll drop a little bit. It's not going to drop, you know, cents. But I hope that it would be able to get closer to seven, 7.0. And if that's the case, then I'd certainly recommend that.
Okay, thank you.
So there's some real attractive wind turbines for residences now. Our village code allows that, right?
So what do we need tonight?
I think.
Remove this item from the agenda.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Simple, second by Sullivan to remove, take this to bid and rebid this. Discussion?
I have a question. Is it, I seem to recall when we did this the first time that there was somewhat of an art form on when you went out to get bids. And so are we, is by us limiting you, we have to sign this contract within so many days and all these rules behind it? Are we limiting your efforts by waiting until two weeks from now to go to bid on a Monday?
No, I mean, I would like to say that I couldn't react that quickly to the marketplace. We're looking at, the three-year rate is the, is the major rate here. And, and we can't move so quickly that two weeks wouldn't hurt you. And the three-year rate's not going to move in a precipitous manner. So it's not like it's going to dip to seven for a couple of days and we'll miss that. Unfortunately not. It's just, I'm hopeful that, you know, that we had a, I mean, well, the agency who's buying the power for ComEd, they have to go into the marketplace and I think they're in the market right now buying, so they're, so there possibly could be some swings in the market on Monday. And my hope is that we got everybody on a bad day. But, you know, there's a technical consulting term for you, right? You know, we got the markets on a bad day. So my only hope is that, you know, at these rates, I don't think waiting hurts us, hurts. And I think there's, I think the opportunity for better pricing is greater than the opportunity for, you know, higher pricing. That's just.
So the market's not happier on Wednesday than Friday?
But, you know, yeah, my only sense is that perhaps there were, you know, too many buyers in the market today. And, you know, possibly next Monday will be, you know, two Mondays will be better.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. I think we may want to think about ways to start getting the word out to residents to maybe begin to expect both the release of that information somehow. Because, you want to think about that. It's going to be a big change. Be right, the bills will check, the bills will go higher. So think about that.
Well, the thing that's unusual, I hear is that, here's the gold number that you can't. Economics of that are, I don't understand what's going on in that regard. You can talk about the penny added on for a lot of our charge.
Yeah, that's a great question. Why was the gap so far when we started this and now it's inverted?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the agency that buys the power on behalf of Commonwealth Edison, state agency, in 2008, we had done this for a couple of years and there was a fair amount of price fluctuation going on in the market from year to year. So the agency decided to lock in some longer-term rates and the key was, the key was price stability. By the way, back in 2008, rates were going up about 115% a year. So they locked in price stability, they locked in rates through 2013. That was a great plan, except that about nine months later, we went into a recession with the financial markets seizing up. And when that happened, in the recession, the market for rates, supply and demand crashed. And so as a result, in hindsight only, you would say they locked in at the wrong time. So as a result, there was a big spread between our rates, what we did. So when we first went to bid, I think it was 35% savings. The first year, second year was 20% savings. So now that those rates have rolled off, they're able to go into the marketplace and, and buy much closer to what we've always been buying in the marketplace.
Okay. Why is Commonwealth Edison still in business?
Well, Commonwealth Edison will always be in business because Commonwealth Edison is just a wires company and all they do is maintain the wires. So they're a monopoly, we need them, they're the only ones. The question you're asking is, why is there a quote ComEd rate?
They're living off their transition.
And, and, and that's the state of Illinois's choice to have a fallback plan available to residents who don't want to be bothered with making a choice. There's always a fallback plan. Unfortunately, that's complicating issues now. And part of this could be resolved if they would say, if they would take that option away because you can't plan it. It's problematic, obviously, as you just found out tonight, it's problematic in the planning since we never know what the rate is and it's a moving target.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anything else from the, anything else? No, okay, takes us to Village Attorney, Mr. Marino.
I have no report, but I understand that there is something for an executive session. And the executive session would be under, both items would be under the same exception, 5 ILCS 120, section 2C5. However, one item is with respect to land acquisition. And the other item is with respect to setting a price for leasing of certain Village projects.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay, Village Clerk?
None.
Okay, all right. All right, that takes us to, we need a, we're going to go recess into executive session at this point. And there is no, will there be action required at the end? No, there won't be any action required after the executive session. So I need a motion to recess into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss, staff.
Yes. Yes.